Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at the last meeting, there was a Public Works driver on public agenda, and she was accompanied by a group of Public Works employees with green vests on like what you see here today. And they stood at the podium and explained to this council that they are tired, is what I heard. They are tired because of the antiquated system that we are operating by investing in high-dollar trucks that are automated, that go down the street, and they are able to quickly in less than 30 seconds or so emptied the trash, return the trash can to its position, and move to the next. The reason they're tired is because we have an extra driver that's in a truck, a white truck, that's going to drive along behind them like I saw when I was in route to this meeting this morning. The white truck with inmates was driving along behind an automated truck with a single driver. And those inmates were picking up uncontainerized trash, and they were picking, they were emptying actually garbage cans that are out that don't meet our criteria, that our automated arms will go pick them up. So they were out on Ilges Road, Rigdon Road, Ilges Road when I was coming in, and that's what they were doing as I watched that white truck. And so if we had the cart system policy, the standard, the standard that has been addressed or adopted by other communities in Phoenix City across Georgia, if we had a standard, then they would have to put their trash in a receptacle, purchase another receptacle, or be gifted a receptacle, that you would not need that second truck. That second truck requires diesel fuel, we got to pay a CDL driver, we got to have two inmates, we got to have maintenance on those white trucks because they are following a, an automated truck, and there's no need for that truck and two, and a driver, and that driver could be off picking up yard waste, doing whatever else they need to be doing rather than following another truck. We cannot sustain that, and this has nothing to do with RFP. And so that's why they're here. And so Director Short, would you, I mean, that's why you're, you're, as a director, and you've been in every division, over every, every division that I know of, you've been with the city forty years, forty. And you go to the American Public Works meetings, and you know what's going on across the country. This is your, what are you asking?
Yeah, this is a national, the national trend. This is what the best practice is considered for the United States of America. It is not to have people on the back of a truck throwing trash like we used to do back twenty years ago. It is to have the automation in place, to have a standard for your community that not only helps get the trash off the ground, but it helps your community stay cleaner. And I'm going to ask, Mayor, I have to say this, for Department head privilege, I'm going to ask for all of Public Works to stand. I was going to ask you all to come up here, but I'm going to ask you just to stand where you are. These people, I have to, I have to say this, Councilor Crabbe, I was completely disheartened by your comments about these people. These people work hard, they work in six days a week, they don't see their families, and if they were dressed in public safety uniforms, nobody would question their presence. And it really hurt my heart that you would consider them so low on the total pole that they can't come and, and speak, and be present for something that's going to affect their lives.
Director, City Manager.
Okay, three, I'll just come out.
That's.
I don't agree.
Mayor, mayor, it's out of order for this counselor to be addressing down this, this my director.
Listen, everybody, everybody stop where they are. Counselor Thomas.
They were her comments, Counselor.
Mayor.
This has been, this has been, this has been suspended. That's been done. So Director, confine your comments, please, to the information that you're bringing with regards to the project.
Well.
When I came into this position, that's where I'm going to speak. Counselor Davis, you told me, you said, Ms. Short, you've got a hard job on your hands. And you're right, it is hard. But I thought I had the support of this body when you voted before my time to purchase forty ASL trucks. When you purchase a different type of equipment, you're changing your program. This is a part of the change in the program. It is not something that other communities have not successfully implemented. They have. I don't understand why it is so hard for us to implement it. But I will say that these trucks are here, they're going to do what, what we need them to do. We don't need to continue to invest in old trucks that require three people to operate it. That's all we're saying. That's all we're saying. We're asking for this community to trust this body in the decisions that you made, upgrade the program, because that's what you're asking us to do. And that's all we're trying to do. That's all we're trying to do. Not make life hard, not make it so impossible that people can't do it, not based on your economic status, but based on a standard that our community has put in place, to not have litter on the ground, bulk waste on the ground, but to have it picked up. And as we continue to move forward in this program, there are going to be other changes that we want, we're going to be wanting to implement as far as the process. I go through my neighborhood. I see where my neighbors are putting out all three of their carts at one time. They don't want to take them back and forth, back and forth, and back and forth, and it makes sense. So there are things that we're going to be bringing forward to you. That's not because we just want to do it, it's because you invested in forty new ASLs, that's sixteen million dollars worth of trucks, to implement and upgrade our program, and that's all we're trying to do. They're trying to get home to their families, and all they can see is a body that's not willing for them to be at home, to spend time with their families, because they're having to work six days a week. So I'm asking that you support us, help us to do the job that I know these people can do. You've got the best, they've got the best equipment, they just need support. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. And so, Madam Mayor, we do have this item, and, you know, yeah, this is an emotional thing for them, and I applaud them for the job that they do, and for this director who's trying to move us to a standard. And, and so, and I, you know, I pray for civility around this table both ways. You know, I mean, we, we, you know, we don't, we're not a certified city of civility with GMA because we can't get there. And so we're asking to, this is a, you know, if you're going to give low-income persons a second cart, give it to them. If you're going to sell carts to others, sell it to them. But we need to use the automated trucks, equipment, and we do not need trash in bags on the ground where animals are getting into. We need a standard. Other folk, other communities have established a standard. Why can't we have a standard in Columbus, Georgia when it comes to waste collection? And so, you know, they're saying they're tired, and they are, obviously, but we're asking you to approve for July 1st that we will go to a cart system, and items must be contained within the cart. It is just that simple that, what's been requested here. And so Council can either vote it up or down, and we'll move on.
Got it. Counselor Huff.
Thank you, Director Short and Mr. City Manager. Let me get closer to the mic because I'm not speaking that loudly today. This is really simple for us to implement. Whatever we need to work out, we have the rest of April, May, and June. So I'm sure it's enough time for us to get everyone carts between now and then. The pushback, I'm waiting for the conversation that we will have to see what the pushback is. But all I've seen over the past couple of years, I was here when Director Begler was here, and she started bringing forward what the future looked like. And she lined up all the carts here up front for everybody to see. And this is what the future looks like. We are going to have limited number of trucks running, we're going to have limited number of people working. We can do this with a one-man operation on each truck. They get their work done in a timely manner, and they get to go home. I've just been just baffled over the past four or five years now on the simple things that we need to do to move forward as a city. Columbus is in constant competition with Augusta, but we are being looked at across the world. I get phone calls from across the country, from other states, recently about, you know, people moving here to work here and paying them to come. We need to be a city where our Public Works people feel appreciated. We need to be a city where people want to move here because it's a great place to be. We shouldn't have to pay them to come. I've been here now, as I stated the other day, I volunteered for thirty years, I've been elected fourteen years. The other twenty-three years I spent growing up trying to go to college and play baseball. So my whole life has been here, and Columbus is not where it needs to be. We've always been a good city, we've got a lot of good people, but we have to come together, we have to work better together. But I'm just having a hard time understanding today how a one-cart system will not work. It works everywhere. Like I say, I've been watching it for, since nineteen ninety, however long that is, thirty-something years, that's just almost forty years or so. It works everywhere, it works well. I was in Phoenix City the other day watching it work. They're a smaller city, less money, but they seem to do things a lot better than we do sometimes. And I have that discussion with their elected officials, how do you all come together and make this work? And they always come back to me and tell me, you have to sit down and have our discussions that we will have, but you have to listen, you have to see what best practices are, and you have to move forward. And, you know, this, this is not political for me. I appreciate all of you all. I do understand. As a kid, I watched the old garbage trucks come by, and that was somebody's job to feed their family. The people on the back were not prisoners, they were everyday people like you are. And I've watched this whole thing come forward to a one-cart system. So know that you are appreciated. I don't want you to feel any kind of way today. I apologize for anything that you may be feeling right now. I can do that, from me. We love you, we appreciate you, we're going to work hard up here to try to get this done. And hopefully, two and a half, almost three months, we should be able to come together as a body and figure out how to get carts picked up, get them out to everybody. If low-income people need to have discounted carts, free carts, whatever we need to do, we will get everyone a cart so you all can do what you do. Because as Director Short mentioned, as I was leaving home this morning, this is my day. Everybody has at least the garbage cart and the recycling cart out. But those that know that you're coming back to pick up the green cart, they rolled them all out this morning to be lined up appropriately. So all I see at this point in, in my neighborhood, for the ones that are using the system well, is just the spacing of the carts so you can get in and out. They have them too closely stacked together, but that's all I see that we need to work on. But thank you all, and hopefully we as a body will come forward, and hopefully we can move this forward today, because like I say, they're just requesting that the cart system be in place by July 1st. We have two and a half months to work out whatever we need to work out. So I personally will move for approval of this.
All right, Counselor Tucker.
Thank you, Director Short. I know you're very passionate. I honestly, this is a hard, a hard situation. Back in twenty twenty-one, when we first started talking about spending a portion of the American Rescue Plan dollars to automate the trash pickup, I was really the first one, and I actually said it to the ledger, that I had some issues. And this, this right here with our employees standing before us, that's the reason why I had some issues, because I felt like we needed to have more conversation around it, meaning, as I just mentioned, with the low-income individuals, actually putting the cart after the horse, not going out and buy, buying, buying the trucks, and not actually having the conversations that we needed to have in twenty twenty-one, where people would understand what this means when we go to purchasing twenty trucks that are side-loaders. It's, it's a lot of steps that we will need to make, a lot of, and I'm just being honest with you, I don't think a lot of counselors, and I'm just speaking to the ones that I spoke to, they didn't really understand really the ramifications of going to those twenty trucks, what that meant and what that looked like. So now we're here having these ungodly debates, meaning we're being really emotional and not factual. We're speaking a lot of rhetoric and not reality. The reality is, people did not know what questions to ask, Director Short. They really didn't. When we went to this one-cart system, they didn't realize that it was going to come to a day such as today, that we were going to do away with not picking up the trash bags. These are conversations that have been had. They, they really didn't think that we would be right here. That's number one. Number two, it was so many other questions going on around integrated waste, meaning whether we should contract it out. We had questions regarding the yard waste. We know we was hit hard during COVID. I think I call probably every day or send you an email in reference to issues, not just in District Four, but if I'm, I'm riding around and I actually see it, I reach out to you, and I'm thankful for you and Mr. Pittman and all the employees, because I do know they work hard. And I think I had sent a text or something when I told you they were out at seven-thirty PM in the nighttime, and I was concerned about their safety, being hit, because I know how people don't pay attention when they're driving. The item was delayed, but it was not denied. Like, we're not denying it, it was just delayed to have conversations. One of the questions that I wanted to know is, do we have enough carts? Do we, how many carts do we have currently that we can truly deploy putting the carts out into the community? Because that's going to be step one to ensuring that we can really go to this one-cart system, people getting additional, additional carts. And as I mentioned, I did, I rode through District Four, I rode through part of District One and District Three today because I dropped Megan off early. And I did see in the areas that I grew up in, in East Carver Heights, a lot of trash in those areas. And when you talk about, you know, at the bottom, you know, whatever, on Carver Street, some of the senior citizens, of course, they got one cart out there. But some of those individuals on down the street near Edgewood, they got a whole bunch of bags in one cart. And then I asked my que, myself today, and that's the reason why I went with the Assistant City Attorney to say, hey, we need to just go ahead and implement doing the low-income family, because think about that area. I'm sure it's a lot of low-income households in that area that need an additional cart, but probably can't afford it. So these were the questions that I had. I don't know what the other questions the other counselors had, but it was not to deny. I think that we had time to actually have these conversations, because we're trying to implement something on July 1st. So if we even delayed it just one meeting, it would have helped to have further conversations. I think sometimes we get really, really caught up in emotions, period, all of us. All of us are guilty of getting caught up in emotions. All of us are tired, I know they're overworked, and probably feel underpaid. And think about it, if we did not implement that above and beyond pay, they really would have been feeling underpaid and underappreciated. But the council appreciate them enough to say that we need to go above and beyond in reference to that pay increase. It's a lot of things, a lot of conversations that can be had, and I know that we want to be emotional, but please let's stay in the facts. Let's stay in the facts. And the facts, the facts are, we got a lot of challenges here far as trying to implement this process.
Ms. Mayor, if I may.
Well, we've got several counselors in queue. Let's try, let's try to get.
Before you go. So I just want to thank you, but seriously, it was delayed but not denied. I think we have time. So how many, how many carts do, do we have? Do we have enough carts now?
Yes, ma'am. We are constantly looking at our inventory to ensure that we have enough carts to at least start the process of affording individuals a second cart. We've got more than enough for those that have already called in requesting it, and for those that are on low income that would have requested, and the new residents coming into Muskogee County.
So, so that was like one of the questions, how many carts, you know, do we have? In reference to the plan for us, distribution, how many carts have we actually, since we approved that, how many carts we have distributed throughout the city, meaning after we approved the addition, the fifty-five dollars? Like, have we actually?
We have not at this point. We're waiting on the Water Works to finish upgrading their, not upgrading their system, but making the adjustments to the water bill for the fifty-five dollar additional charge replaced on the water bill. And I've already spoken with Ms. Clark, and they should have it done within the month.
Okay, so within a month. What, what would your thought process be in reference to the low-income people, far as the waiver? How long do you think that would take?
My, my thought is, first and foremost, is we don't want anyone to have to buy an additional cart. That's the first thing.
I know you want people to recycle.
We will show them how to, we can audit their trash, show them how to recycle, to reduce the amount of waste that they are putting in the black cart, thus the need for an additional cart. We've had people to take us up on that, and they, they are thankful. So I think a lot of people need to give themselves some credit as far as what they need to learn in order to make sure they don't have to have that additional expense. So we are still able, willing, and ready to go out there and do that for anyone that calls us in regards to that. As far as, I forgot, what was your question again?
Water bill. Far as the low income.
The low income, my thoughts on that is, again, the majority of the people that are on your low income are your elderly residents. Very few of them are younger residents, if you will, which you would think would have the larger amounts of waste. So I don't know that that's really going to affect your low income, but I'm not saying that there aren't going to be any that won't need it, because there, I'm sure there are some. But the majority of your residents are on, are seniors that are on low income.
Okay. So that, that was the, the main two questions, really about the inventory and seeing that we're waiting probably like a month, you say a month time for the water bill?
She's saying we're about a month to get it situated on the water bill. And they're working on that right now, so it's just a matter of time of them letting me know when they're ready to start.
Okay, so we have the inventory, we're just waiting on the process for the water bill.
Correct.
We can implement the low income based on if they actually, you know, if they need it. But yeah, it was really just trying to make sure that we get the carts out, because what, what will happen for those individuals if they leave their trash still doing the same process? Like, what, what is going to happen?
Well, every route has a supervisor, and that supervisor would tag the, the, the home and set up a time that they can speak with the resident to make sure that they understand the process. We can tag the cart that they're using, we can also put it on their door hang, on their doorknobs, to call for that kind of assistance.
Yeah, and I know that we have really been involved with the media. Can we circle back around again to all the media outlets?
Absolutely.
And actually say that, and I, I would say this, one of the things, and I, you know, that I like in reference to, to what election and registration does, they go to a lot of churches. You know, you're going to get a lot of people, especially some of the larger churches, and just talk to people, inform them. You can do the demonstration in reference to what you can recycle, and just really get that word out so we can truly feel comfortable with, you know, implementing this process. But just getting, getting the word out. I know in my neighborhood, we actually printed out when we did, when we voted to approve that fifty-five, and we went to every household in our subdivision, letting them know that you'll soon be able to purchase, you know, another cart if you need one. But yeah, just, just getting, getting out, I mean, getting a word through Neighborhood Watch groups. But as I said, it was delayed, not, not denied, because we, like you said, we know that we ha, we have to implement something because we have trucks. So we know we're going to have to move forward. So I just wanted to make sure that I said that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you, Counselor Thomas, I appreciate your words. My comments were misconstrued. Last, last week, you were here, and you came in front of this body, and you talked about how tired you were and how overworked you were. And all I could think was, this could be a long conversation, and what is that going to do to your day? How much longer are you going to have to work tonight in order to catch up and finish your job? That's, that's what was my concern. And I didn't mean to be disrespectful in any way. You have a very important role in this community, and we're trying desperately to make the right decision. As Counselor Tucker said before, we didn't know to ask the right questions. We didn't have enough information. Even Counselor Huff mentioned how we can work out the, the details between now and July. I don't want to piecemeal this, this situation, because when we do, you guys suffer, and I don't want you to suffer anymore than you already are. I'm trying to look out for you, I'm trying to look out for the citizens that need you to take care of them. I have to look at the whole picture, and in no way would I purposely insult you. And so if you took it as an insult to you, I apologize with my whole heart, because there's no way that I don't appreciate you. And if I don't say it enough to you personally, I'm saying it now, I appreciate you. I, I say it to Mr. Pittman and to Ms. Ms. Shore, but I don't see you guys, I'll try and wave at you while you're driving by and things like that, but I don't get the opportunity to tell you how much I appreciate you. And I was trying to show it today, and if the words that came out of my mouth didn't come out properly to show you my appreciation, they meant that I was looking out for you. And so I apologize, but I really do want to have as much of our ducks in a row before we implement this and before we're, we vote on this. I don't want us Before we implement this and before we're, we vote on this, I don't want us coming back. Four and five times between now and July with piecemeal. You're gonna forgive us a little bit of information here and a little bit of information there. And then we have to, you know, we get frustrated be- because we've made decisions. That we didn't know, you know, three steps down the road, what that was going to result in. So I like to see the big picture and I'd like to see, I'd like to see it all together. Not in five different meetings. And I'd also like to see options. You know, maybe this isn't an option, the one cart system isn't an option. But there are a lot of options within the one cart system that we should be able to see and decide upon.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Begley?
Hi Director Short. Um, I appreciate you moving us toward best practice. Uh, if it's working in other cities, I'm sure we can figure out as well. Um, I also appreciate deadlines. I feel like a lot gets done. Let me put a, a goal there. Um, I, I do have two questions. Um, you know, I, I can support the, the, the goal death date. I just have two questions. I'll make sure I either understand how to explain them or make sure we've got some kind of solution between now and then. I guess the first question is um the exception. So you've got people who fifty weeks a year. One cart is sufficient and then two other weeks whether they've got a party, they just moved into their house. Uh, Christmas. And so a- again, not fifty weeks, they're, they're good and they're like, I don't want to buy a cart for those fifty weeks. I just need it for two. So what, what do we tell, my first question is, what do we tell those residents?
So during those two weeks out the year, Thanksgiving, Christmas and any other large waste generating holiday. We will have rear loaders there to pick up that additional trash. We will do that. Not a problem. We've already got it built in. To our program to go along with ASLs so that we can get that up as well. Because we recognize during those holidays, you're gonna have an abundance of waste.
So, but so just to clarify, like if it, if they moved into a house on August first, not a, a, a big trash holiday. And they're like, I don't, I don't need one forever. Just, I, I moved in and I've got a bunch of boxes for, or I got a bunch of stuff because I just moved in. What do we tell those people?
They just need to call three one one and put in that request.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, absolutely.
The, the second question, for people who are non-compliant, right? So your, your neighbor's non-compliant. And I know we, we can put the sticker on there.
Right.
Uh, but, but after like three weeks, you're like, my neighbor's non-compliant. Uh, what is our plan to get them compliant?
We do have two compliance officers that can enforce the waste manag- the waste. Uh, what's the right term? Solid Waste Collection Ordinance, if you will. And they can issue them citations and take them to court.
Okay, so, so, so make sure I captured everything. So if you, if you have a big weekend, that's a one-off, call three one one.
Yes.
Uh, for the big trash generating holidays, we're going to have additional support with the rear loaders.
Absolutely.
And then if someone, if your neighbor is non-compliant, they will get cited.
They can be, yes.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Davis?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, look, I wasn't here last week, but I'm trying to pull all this together and, and I'm not. I'm gonna try to leave everybody out of this and just talk straight from a business perspective. And what I do, if I was at a board meeting in a room with all my general partners trying to figure out what's the next best step and how we move forward. I'm still trying to figure out what we're talking about here. The, all the information we've been given relates to aesthetics. Is it aesthetics or what we see here is the burden on the labor force and we got employees saying that I'm. I'm being asked to, to, to work long hours and I'm overworked. So is, what are we really trying to address here in this whole thing? And then I hear the presentation, which, look. I said from day one when uh Director Criddle was here that we were gonna have challenges. When we were in the Trade Center, I brought it up, I said it and it's all come into fruition. And I'm not convinced the, the, the. The word used or the frag used a clear picture, the bigger picture is appropriate, it's very appropriate. Because I get the sense now that we're piecemealing things and it was just said, we're gonna have more challenges and more issues and we'll deal with them as we get there. Ah, that makes me really, really uncomfortable. And I still hadn't got to the point that I'm comfortable with, when are you gonna hit me with the bill? Because all this is going in a direction that is gonna cost more money. And what we're talking about today is not going to address either one of them. In my opinion, right now, I have been convinced that either one of those issues, whether aesthetics or. The amount of pressure that's put on the labor force is gonna be addressed. Because you still have the same amount of garbage. Wonder if all fifty-eight thousand people want a second cart? That's a lot of time, that's a lot of workload. The process, a lot of this stuff is symptomatic of the automation system that everybody, we talked about during COVID. We used not to have these discussions. Before COVID, we did not. We talked about funding sources. Never talked about this. Everything was going great and we were kudos to our staff and our operation because they were getting the job done. We didn't have what's being expressed now. We talked about funding. We gotta go up higher on the integrated waste bill because we gotta buy trucks, equipment. Landfill closures and all the rest of the stuff. We're not even having that conversation here, which is important to me of adding all that in there. This is not a today determination. It's gonna be a five, ten-year determination for the strategy and how we're moving forward with the city. What we're gonna need to do, because we're gonna continue to be, what I heard today confirmed it. And what I believe is that we're gonna be continued to confront challenges. And at the end of the day, it's gonna take more and more funding to make that happen. And I don't have a clear picture on that. You're asking, make a determination on what today? Aesthetics?
Well.
Or, hang on a minute, I'm not finished. Or are you asking me to make a decision to relieve the, the workload burden on employees? Because I'm gonna tell you something, I think it's gonna be a misconception. It's gonna be a misconception if you think the cart system, the automated cart system going. To one cart when you're all asking people to buy carts, because the people are gonna have a lot of trash, they just buy a cart and put it in there. You pick up one cart, you gotta light it down, then you gotta go get the other cart and let it down, then you gotta go up one side of the road, do the same. To everybody and back down. That does not solve the time matter, in my opinion. I haven't been convinced that that's gonna solve the time matter. What it tells me is that you're gonna have to buy more trucks and hire more drivers. And you're gonna have to shorten routes. Which is gonna be an excessive cost if you're gonna continue to go in that direction. Nobody's had that conversation or even convinced me to that point. And then we've got the landfill closure matters and then we've got extra costs that's being asked for in the background. I think it's been prudent that the council has asked for RFPs. Not only an RFP, what I'm looking for is an RFP on just totally turning the. Waste management system over to the private sector or going back to the hybrid. You know, we weren't having these issues when we, we were doing the hybrid. When I say hybrid, it would be, we were doing uh garbage, household waste in-house. And then we were letting a private vendor doing the yard waste and all. Now, yeah, it costs money. But it was working, it seemed like it was working there for a while and got caught up. But now we've gone back to, we want to get in to the automated, we want to do it in-house. And I, I just don't think because we're having this conversation that we're gonna have one. Car to go to one co- car and allow people to buy carts that the status of what we're talking about is gonna change. I, I don't want y'all to think that all of a sudden it's gonna change. I don't think it's gonna change. I think we're still gonna be confronted with that challenge. But I do know that it's prudent as leadership to understand where we're going in the future. I want to know what it costs to turn things over to the private sector like other cities had, had to do. Times have changed. I mean, times have changed and you're gonna have to get in a position where you either restructure, you get left behind. Are you gonna deal with these challenges that you're dealing with? And then you're gonna have to keep throwing money at it. And that's gonna be an excessive burden to push that off on our citizenry. We can't, we just cannot do that. And it's gonna get too expensive. I've said that. This is gonna get really, really expensive. And we, we have that. Uh, uh, what do we call her? A cost uh. Uh, analyst that comes in here and tells us what we need to charge people? That wasn't really, that wasn't a, a. Cost benefit analysis. That was just somebody telling us, here's where we're going, this is what's gonna cost, this is what you need to charge. Well, I haven't really seen a, a detailed breakdown, but we have asked for those cost benefit analysis. Because there's several factors that the consultant doesn't include in her equations. Maybe when I watched the presentation, I mean, she just wanted to throw more money at it and come up with a way to, on the second cart, we're gonna start charging ten more dollars a month. I, I'm waiting for that to come. I don't even know if that's gonna happen, but it's gonna happen. And, you know, I made a comment right here that we probably better off just charging five dollars increase on integrated waste fee. And raise those funds, because really she was saying the same thing, it was just different, different approach. You know, I don't know if that was meant to be or not, but the other thing. The RFPs on a hybrid, back on a hybrid on the R, a competitive, compet- we have not done competitive bids, we have not, RFPs. And we need to see what that looks like. I think it's prudent on this council, on the leadership of this council, that we need to address that. It's the right thing to address. Now, everything that I'm hearing is all management. It's a management issue, alright? You can take that any way you want to, but I, like I said, I'm talking about business. The stuff, the stuff we're talking about is a management matter and it's the decisions of the management. The management is making these decisions symptomatic of a, 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 a single car automation system. That's what it is. And you have to work within that realm. And your labor component is part of that. I'm sorry, I'm not, like I said, I'm not talking and. We, we appreciate the people out there doing the jobs, but I'm talking about business, the labor component or the employee component, you have to have that. Whether you're in the private sector, working for the city, it's the same thing. And. We, we need to understand those challenges and, and where we're going and what, and determine that cost. Or else the next time that we have this conversation, it's gonna be something different. It's gonna be another thing and another thing. And we still not able to provide the assurance to the citizens that we're getting it, we're getting it done, okay? And that's not a, that's not, you're, I've said it, you know. You inherited, Director Short, a lot of this. So a lot, we, a lot of employees have too. You've inherited this new system. Council's had questions, management wants to go in that direction. So the other thing is, I've talked about, we've talked about the cost benefit analysis. I've yet to see that. We've talked about RFPs, yet to see that. And I've talked about years about creative ways of generating new revenue and I'm just gonna take it as I've been dismissed. I, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not, okay, Director Short, I, I, I see that face, but I'm not talking about you.
I understand.
You, you weren't in the position when I, I've been talking about this for years. I mean, I can solve that deficit right now that we're talking about, what we solved from the uh external auditor. I can solve that today. But why is there no will to do these things? Why are we just keep pushing the burden on the fifty-eight thousand people and just keep pushing it and pushing it on them? That's not, that's not right. Like I said, times have changed. You're gonna have to do business different, you're gonna have to restructure. And I think it's prudent, whether we do these things or not, I think we need to look at them. And I think of where we're at today and saying and summing all this up is that I would like to have the answers. Before I move forward, I would like to have the answers to some of those. And I, I, I guess you're asking for the first, but. Why couldn't we continue this to the end of the year and get some of these things answered and addressed? And then we can figure out what to do with it. So.
Alright.
Whenever I can talk, let me know.
Well, maybe I don't want you to talk. So anyway, that is just, and, and, and I'm not looking for answers, the city manager. I just made a summary of where I'm at and why I'm gonna vote. So I'm not asking for.
I know.
Any comments back in the direction.
Want to come in though.
But.
Said a lot.
I've asked for some things here that I'd like to see and that would be my reasoning behind my vote.
I understand. And so, Mayor, he asked a couple of questions.
And it's clearly my opinions.
I, I get it. But, but he did ask a couple of questions that need to be. You ask if, if it's aesthetics or is it, you know?
Well.
That wasn't a question?
But there, there were some comments made that the city manager might be able to shed some light on as the new administrator, so we're gonna let him.
Well, first of all, in, in, in my opinion, it's, it's aesthetics because we want a standard. I don't know when you drive down your street, what you see. I don't know if where you live, you see bags. Of trash sitting outside the trash can, you know, and, and all that. But, but it's not a good, pretty sight. And uh, and so it's aesthetics and it's about, if we didn't have one truck following another. Uh, we basically, we've got twice the number of dri- uh, you know, drivers out there, one truck following another. You're, you're burning diesel fuel. It doesn't take a rocket scientist. Well, if, we, how you gonna?
Counselor, 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 allow him the.
So I'm not finished. Uh, but, so it's both. And so if we had the cart system. We wouldn't have duplicate, duplicated uh labor on a route with inmates. They could be out doing, the inmates could be out doing something else. And so, so we want a standard. Uh, when you go to other cities, they are, they have standards. Columbus, Georgia deserves a standard. I hope you want a standard in Columbus, Georgia. A clean, when you drive down the street, it should be neat and clean and not trash all over the place or animals out get. I, I mean, it's a standard. And it's a rhetorical question, do you not want a standard in Columbus? I do. And so, and that standard, if we set that standard, would give these drivers relief that they would not have to be sitting here like they're doing now. Crying out to you, this legislative body, help us. They're saying to you, listen to your, my management. That's what they're saying. Because they believe and trust management with forty years of experience. They know what they're doing. And we've brought study, I've been bringing studies here for fifteen years. I, I'd love for you to say, Isaiah, bring me a book of every study and I'll bring them and put them right there on the table. Because, and, and the consultant that you've had here multiple times over the last ten years, the consultant. Has, has said to us, here is, you know, and they, they've done it for Macon, they've done it for Albana, they've done it for Metro City. They have credentials to show that we've done this for other communities. Columbus has not listened because I guess we figure, we are, you know. We, we, we got it all figured out. We don't have to listen to a paid consultant. So you asked a question, I think, Mr. Pittman, you wanted to respond to some things that the counselor said, but it's both.
Absolutely. Uh, from a uh, a operational business perspective. And to deliver some facts to you, all the things that we brought before you is from facts. You know, the facts are that we know that the one cart system will work. We know that the one cart system implementation will relieve and reduce the cost, the operating cost that we do daily. We're working forty hours plus ten plus ten is sixty hours a week. If we implement the one cart system, the staff that we have that's picking up the additional garbage on the ground is our staff for our yard waste. So that's where the, 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 the confusion comes in, that we got more than enough staff. I've been doing this for thirty plus years. And I'm gonna tell you, I've seen it work, the one cart system. Everybody put their garbage in their can, we run the minimum amount of routes, we create efficiency in the operation. And everybody gets to go home. We don't have to work additional ten hours because we gotta go pick up yard waste on a Wednesday and a Saturday. You know, it, it's, it's not set up and designed that way. The facts are, it would work. I've done it, I've been a part of it. I've been, even been a consultant in this business. I've been a department director, I've been a manager, I've been a solid waste worker. I've done it all. I've started at the top and worked my way all the way up. I've started when they were going to the back door. Picking it up by hand, taking it to the curb. You know, it's, it's a no-brainer. You know, it's progress that we are making. We don't want to be left behind. We want to move forward. So what we're saying to you is that we want to be better. We want to be more efficient. We want to be exclusive. We don't want to be mediocre. We don't want to be in the middle. We want to be sitting at the top. So when somebody calls the city manager or s- or one of you guys up there and ask about the city of Columbus, well, we are progressive. And that's what we gotta do. We gotta take care of our people. My staff is not robots. They are people just like you and I. You know, we got a system in place where we work forty hours a week. We can't even honor that, you know? They call off on a Wednesday, they tired, they wore out, they broke. Saturday, same effect. But we gotta get that yard waste up. We gotta get that garbage up. It's a priority. And that's what we're gonna do. Now, we can't wait until the end of the year and try to figure out something. We gotta do something today. We gotta make a decision today. You know, it impacts us, my staff, the community, you know, make a decision. I'm telling you, from facts, from experience, the one cart system works and it will continue to work.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Pittman. Counselor Kogel? But you, you're, you're next.
He can argue to Counselor D.
Okay. Please.
Thank you, sir. We're not, we're not entitled to respond, only staff and you.
Yeah, no, sir, you're lighting us on, floor is yours.
Well, Mr. City Manager, I want standards too, okay? We've got ordinance on the books, I would like better uh, uh, beautification when it comes to litter, I'd like all the sign ordinances enforced, I'd like our tree ordinance enforced, I'd like a lot of things enforced, but it doesn't get done. I don't think just to say, because we go to a one-car system, that all of a sudden, everything's just gonna clear up and it's gonna look better. All you're telling people is that you want them to put less trash out, that's all you're telling them. And if they get a second cart, they're just gonna take the stuff off the streets and put it in the second cart, which you gotta pick that cart up too at the same time. So, I'm looking at this more from business, I mean, I'm not looking at it like, from a standpoint of just throwing out assertions or a political aspect of this to just provide a footing for the basis of people's positions. I'm not doing that. I've told you that I have not been convinced yet that we're gonna be able to make this, uh, uh, that we're gonna be able to accomplish this. I don't see that going away. I don't see people still, what are we gonna do when they just put out trash? We're not gonna pick it up, we're only gonna pick up the cart and move on?
Is that a question?
And we're gonna, what are we gonna tell them? I mean, you're gonna have to get the second cart, and then you're gonna have to pick up the second cart, or you're gonna have to take it somewhere else. I don't know, it's not a question.
Okay.
I'm just posing it as a thought. Okay, I'm posing it as a thought. But, that does not negate some of the things I've talked about that we really need to understand. And before we make a decision, if that's what it takes to get some of these things accomplished, then that's what I'm saying. And, you know, what we're doing today, I know where it's gonna lead, but I'm still getting, trying to get answers to some of these other questions that are out there, because at the end of the day, eventually it's gonna lead to an excessive cost. But, when you show me we can start doing some of these things to help out, then, you know, we would be in a better position to move forward.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Kogel?
Um, I appreciate all my colleagues' uh, comments and I think they really sum up, um, what we're asking for here. Uh, uh, you know, we're not, we're definitely, like Counselor Tucker said, not denying um, and not voting down an integrated one-waste cart system. We're trying to not spend the next six or nine, however many months chasing our tail and trying to, um, and trying to react to an issue. What we're trying to do here as a, as a body is put all of the information out before council, so that we have all the information that is in front of us. And Mr. City Manager, we want a clean, structured city, just like you do. We, we want, we want to look down our street and see order and, and all the trash lined up. It's, it's pretty, I agree, it's a pretty sight. But, what we're at, I mean, we have asked, we have begged, we have demanded, we have gone every route in the last year, probably a little bit more now than a year, for a cost, cost analysis on how much it costs to run Public Works. So that we can lay it out beside a competitive RFP, and we can look it out, we can, we can look at what Public Works costs. We can determine whether it is better for our citizens to privatize, to hybrid, or to go to public Works. Because when it comes down to it, we have a responsibility for our, to our citizens to have a very pretty, structured, and, uh, clean city. We have that responsibility, but we also have a, a responsibility, and I would argue a little higher up on the, on the food chain, we also have a financial responsibility to our citizens, to let our citizens know how much this is going to cost in the future. And so when we have an analysis, or the, the lady come and give us a presentation over presentation of what it potentially could cost, we don't have a commitment on how much this is going to cost. And so, to say, yes, we're gonna implement this July first, I'm gonna have to respond to my constituents, well, sorry, I don't know how much this is gonna cost you yet, we're just going to, uh, w- we've just approved it for July first, and we'll figure it out before July first. And so we sit here and we're chasing our tails all the time, and we're trying, we're, we're being a reactive government and a reactive um, council body, because we're not given all the information all at the same time, we're left here to piece it together over and over and over again, and you're forcing us to do the work at the table. And so, we end up, it's, it's true.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, we've had, we've had conversation over conversation, presentation over presentation over the last, I, I've been here for fourteen months. We haven't had one consolidated conversation that says, this is the competitive RFP, this is what, uh, this is our cost analysis, this is what it costs to run Public Works, and this is what it would cost to have a hybrid. And this, these are the options. We could either, uh, we could add a fee to our water bill, we could add a fee to all of the citizens in Columbus, or we could add a, you know, a fee to just the, the people who, who have trash collection. And, and yet, we have to sit here and we have to waste valuable time having these discussions where we can't just come together and, and put it all out in, in one conversation. We're sitting here, we're chasing our tails all the time.
Well, Mayor, if I may, just quickly, I, I've got good news for the counselor. One piece of good news, it's not gonna cost your constituents anything to go to a one-car system, they just need to put the trash in the cart, and if they need a second cart, it's available for fifty-five dollars, that's good news. And the other good news is the, RFP is due on May third, and, and I can't wait for you to see what it's gonna cost, and, and I'm all for contracting it out. Pay, pay the private sector what they're gonna charge you to contract it out, it's gonna be real interesting to see. And so that's good news, and, uh, and so, as I said earlier, I've, we've had, over the years, I can bring you fifteen presentations on, and I think when Weatherington was the mayor, I brought a book to council, that thick, with every presentation that had been done and recommendation, and I gave a book to every council member.
We.
Way back then. And so, and so we've continued to do those through this date. And so, we bring the information, and we have professional consultants giving it to you, you just have not accepted it.
Well, and, and we've got a couple of counselors lined up, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Counselor Garrett. He has to leave, uh, for a, uh, appointment this afternoon. Counselor?
Just briefly, um, I, I mean, I'm all in favor of us getting the RFP, but everywhere that I've seen that they do private waste pickup, they use an ASL. And they're almost all one-car systems. It was that way, uh, in Montgomery, where my wife's from, uh, multiple other cities, places I've been, I've had trials, I've seen it. So if anything, we would be getting our citizens ready for what a RFP would probably be their response, if the RFP made more sense. The RFPs are due in May, so I think we've got plenty of time to, uh, find out, you know, any and all of our questions regarding cost analysis, and that can be compared to RFP, but uh, right now, I mean, you know, if we go with an RFP, they're probably gonna say we can only have one cart. I like that the city's making a compromise right now and allowing a second cart at a very affordable rate. Uh, I'm in favor of this, I do have to leave to go to the doctor, but I would, uh, move for its approval. And, um, you know, if, if there's other people needing to speak on it, you know, certainly y'all can, but I'm gonna call in immediately and vote on it.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. Motion second to approve the, uh, one-cart system. Uh, Counselor Tucker to the motion. Uh, alright, well then, we have nobody queued up to speak to the motion. So all in favor of approving the one-cart system, please say aye. Any opposed? Alright, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
One, two, three, and Mayor Potters is voting in favor.
Okay, so it's. Yes, I'm sorry. And all those opposed, please raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five.
So it's inconclusive. Alright, Counselor Tucker?
Yes. Uh, when we had AmWaste picking up the yard, yard waste, was that actually helping with the workload of the staff?
Well, at the time, we were short-staffed, that's the only reason why. We had to go to a private vendor to help pick up the yard waste. We didn't have enough drivers.
So, my, my question is, and we were short-staffed, if we would bring in something like AmWaste to do the yard waste, would that help with, um, the workload of our, our staff?
Absolutely, because we wouldn't no longer need them.
And what, the question is, you know, our integrated waste fund is busted. And where, where are you gonna get the money? We can't pay another ten million dollars to AmWaste and, and still run integrated waste.
Okay.
We can't afford it.
How many, when we had AmWaste, I know when we originally did it, I think they was only doing, and please forgive me if I'm misstating this, is it five routes, or five?
They started with five routes, they ended up with all fourteen routes.
So they started with five routes.
Correct.
And that, the five routes was one point seven, seven million dollars. Right? Oh, yeah, Toi, yeah, I was about to say, call my first name, say, yeah, Toi was reading, cuz I was kinda trying to prepare for it just this day. But it was one point seven, one point seven seven million dollars for the five routes. For, if you, you said it's fourteen routes total, um, I thought somebody said something, I'm sorry. So it's fourteen routes total. So I guess you would multiply that by three, um, to get the full cost of how much all routes, is that how it would work?
Uh, yeah.
You said it went up?
We can let the finance director address.
So, it was seven million?
So, so what are you trying to do, figure out how much we paid them?
So he, here, here's my, my thing. I know that we have, um, some funds that have not been extended through American Rescue Plan dollars. And my question would be, could we, to, um, get us through the process of having these discussions and trying to determine a actual resolution for our workers, to take the workload off of them, to actually have someone, I don't know if we can just call AmWaste back, and possibly do the five routes for the one point seven seven, or if they went up. I know, um, the director is about to give that amount. We do have the RFP process going on right now, and in that RFP process, we said to do multiple ways, meaning a hybrid, they doing all, all the, the, the waste, um, collections, that this is part of the RFP. But for right now, I'm asking if it is possible. I don't know if we wanna do five routes, or if we wanna do fourteen routes, but I do know that we have extra funds in the American Rescue Plan dollars that have not been extended. If we can use these funds to help our dearly beloved workers of Public Works to do the, um, yard waste. And that way, while we're trying to come up with a solution for, and this, this is not coming out of our budget, per se, it's coming out of grant dollars. So putting some grant dollars out there and paying with the grant dollars, that way we can have these conversations and actually have some, some time within this, this time period. I think the RFP closes May fourth or third. So we'll have some time, um, in between that, just to kinda offset the workload. Would that be something that will help the employees?
You, you know about the ARP dollars?
Oh, no, I was gonna speak to the cost. Initially, the cost per route, um, under the yard waste, RFP wa, AmWaste was twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars per, uh, route. Uh, then they went up.
Can you repeat that? What, what they went up to?
It went up to thirty-one thousand, four hundred dollars per route. And that's what we, uh, were paying them, but there was a request that was made from AmWaste. Um, and I'm trying to find that request, that's the only piece that I'm missing now in terms of the additional amount that they wanted to charge, which is initially, excuse me, while we got out of the private yard waste collection business, um, towards the end of twenty-twenty-three, was because they were going up.
So they was going up past this?
It was going up beyond the thirty-one, four hundred per route, I mean, thirty-one thousand, four hundred per route. I'll get that information in terms of what they were asking us to
What it is.
come up to last.
You said, can you repeat, it was thirty-one thousand?
They were char, we were paying thirty-one thousand, four hundred per route, per month. So on an annualized basis, that would be five point two seven, five million.
Okay. So, um, in reference to that, the thirty-one four per ramp, and I, I mean, I'm just brainstorming here, just trying to come up with some things, but, um, I know the city manager wants you to speak regarding those American Rescue Plan dollars, so I'll wait to hear that.
I'm sorry, what was the question regarding American Rescue Plan? If it's something that we can utilize?
She knows that we have ARP dollars left, and wants to know if we can use those ARP dollars to hire someone like an AmWaste back to contract out versus going to the one-cart system. And, and so.
And I will say, I'm not saying versus going to the one-cart system, I'm saying until we, the RFP closes May third. Um, and normally, once the RFP closes, what's the process?
Okay, so, yeah, right, because that's when all the proposals are due, they're due by May third. So then there's a process, right? Once we get the proposals, we have to go through the proposals and make sure that all the proposed offers qualify, right? Meaning that they presented a proposal to us that has all the information in it that's required to be in the RFP. Um, then there's a committee that's selected, um, usually it is the department that's requesting, um, the RFP to, uh, com- comprise the committee, there's a, usually three to five voting members on the committee. And once the committee is established, then there are meetings that take place with the committee, um, really sort of subsequent to when we receive the proposal. That process could be, I mean, it really just depends on the time and availability of the committee, to be quite honest. And how many proposals we receive, and how much time it just really takes to evaluate those proposals. But it could be anywhere from two to, two to three months to go through committee. And once it goes through the committee, um, there is a recommendation of the committee to either accept an offer, a proposal, or not. Um, but if an offer is, um, a proposal is acceptable to a committee member, then it goes on the city manager's agenda to come before the council to accept and approve that proposal. And one of the things that would not be on the agenda or discussed openly would be the cost. Because in RFP, um, in an RFP process, the costs are negotiable, so we don't disclose those costs.
Well, and, and I will say that I want to figure out a way to speed up that process with the committee.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll do that. Yeah, well, I mean, we'll do that.
And, because I really want to get that back before you, and I, I, I hope that we're able to move forward with contracting that waste collection.
And as far as...
And whatever the cost is, is what the cost will be.
As far as the ARP dollars, I mean, all of the money that has been allocated to the city has been spoken for, so to speak. Um, and that council has approved in phases how we would spend that money. What we'll have to do is, um, take a look at if that plan, if that spending plan is still feasible, to be quite honest, um, to see about potentially reallocating some of the ARP money.
So once we, um, possibly reallocate some of the ARP dollars, that, what involvement this council has, have? Do they have it after you all have decided how to reallocate it? Or does council have a voice in, um, some of the priorities that council sees? And to be able to provide those, um, those priority items?
Well, as executive management, we're going to do what executives do, and then we're going to bring it to the legislative body, so you can do what you do. So we will look at it and we will, based on what we know operational demands are, we'll have a, a, those things that we recommend, and we'll bring it to you, and you can approve it or change it or do whatever you want. You don't have to listen to what staff bring to you.
Isn't that about, not listening?
And this thing sort of changes every day, quite honest, with the ARP, uh, and how we can spend those monies. I mean, we were under the assumption just recently that there was a certain cutoff to certain types of costs as of December 20, 31st of 24, and now we've received, um, information from, um, the treasury that, uh, some of those costs that were once not allowable beyond December 31st of 24 are now extended through December 2026, so that does changes.
I'll say that one more time, I'm sorry.
Some of the, some of the costs, some of the costs for the, some of the programs, uh, that were set to end, like we had to have all of the monies.
The allocated.
Um, sort of spent for a particular type of cost by the end of this year. They've extended that.
To 2026.
To 2026.
Okay. So I, I think from, I think it was a presentation, and I know that we had put allocations in, but we didn't use all those, those allocations of funds. And I'm not trying to go up to the 7 million dollars. It, it really is just some relief, um, with the routes. So if we could look at kind of what would be best as far as re, relief on some of the heavier routes that have yard waste. And I know that, um, AmWaste was giving us, I guess, like a month-to-month cost versus the, the cost for the year. It was like different for the year versus the month-to-month? Is that what?
No, actually, it was the same amount per month.
So regardless whether you do month-to-month or do a year annual contract?
What we wound up paying AmWaste was the same amount that was under the annual contract, in terms of the month-to-month.
So if we could use the American Rescue Plan dollars to help offset some of the workload, could we look at doing that based on kind of those high routes, that heavy routes that, that need yard waste? Through, I'm just saying, some of the routes that probably, based on, um, you all going out, you know which routes have like way more yard waste than others?
It's not the yard waste that, that we're talking about. It's the ground waste, which is...
But yard waste is being picked up on Saturdays.
Right, because we're using the yard waste drivers to drive trucks to pick up the ground waste.
Exactly. So if we do yard waste with some of these American Rescue Plan dollars until we get the RFP process done, it will alleviate that Saturday pickup.
Still have to do all 14 and on Wednesdays, correct?
You, you wouldn't have to do the Saturday pickup, though, meaning that they don't have to work on Saturday? Because that, that has been the main comment, is, is them...
Well, they're working six days a week, not five days a week. They're working six days a week when they normally work four tens.
Yeah, so that's Monday through Friday?
Monday for working, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Okay, so if we did...
Standard, normal.
So if we did yard waste, which yard waste is being picked up on Saturdays now? If we did yard waste, that mean that they would not be working on that Saturday? They will only be working those four days? Is that?
I see what you're, I see what you're trying, I see what you're trying to do.
I, I think she's saying that, you know, since we do yard waste on Wednesdays and Saturdays, if you hired AmWaste to do yard waste, then our drivers wouldn't work Wednesday, Saturday picking up yard waste.
Maybe, maybe not Saturday, but they'll still be working on a Wednesday, because you got ground waste.
But I think the first question is, can you use ARP dollars for such a task?
We'll check, I'll check in there as far as the ARP. And, uh, what it would take in terms of, it was like I was mentioning earlier, in terms of the now allowable, allowing the expenditures, some expenditures to exceed, um, beyond 2024. Now we have to reprogram how we, um, had originally budgeted for those dollars. I mean, extending some of the, the shelf life on some of the expenditures for another two years, that has to be programmed into the reallocation of the costs. But I'll check into, we'll check into the use of, uh, those dollars to see what's available, and just to see if there's enough funding to, um, accommodate the privatization of yard waste for a certain period of time.
I mean, it's not the whole, the whole year. It's just the offset, because we're just looking at the RFP, you know, process just to provide some relief on that.
Okay.
And also, since we're talking about ARP, can we bring the ARP presentation back during the next council meeting? That way, I mean, it'd be a good thing to look at it, especially since we're about to go into the, um, the budget season.
All right, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, to kind of add to some of the comments my fellow colleague made, Counselor Tucker, I just want to say that, look, there, there may be a way to make all this happen. And I'm not against the one-cart system. I will tell you, though, a, as I said, I, I feel like we're at a place and time in this city that we've got to strategically plan, and we got to look five and 10 years out. And I'm talking about the big cost items in the big picture, that I don't know if we're going to be able to, to make those adjustments. And then when I add what I hear here, it just tells me then, are we delaying the inevitable of what could come in the future? Hybrid system, if you need more money, I mean, we just talked about it, but I can, I can find you six, seven mi, the six, seven million dollars you need right now. I mean, if you, if you're willing to approve it, Mr. City Manager, if you're willing to put it on the agenda, I'll approve it.
Where are you going to get it out of fund balance?
We're going to charge a transit user fee, a clo, landfill closure fee. We're going to do that.
Make the motion.
Okay, then we'll head that way. I, I've been asking for, for a long time.
When you say transit user fee, you're talking about charge people who don't necessarily get a water bill? What are you talking about?
Anybody that gets a water bill. Anybody that gets a water bill under our current collection syst, system. If you've got a water bill, you're staying somewhere. You're, you're, you're paying rent somewhere, or you have a house.
Well, I mean, I don't oppose that. I never have. And I'm just saying, if that's what you want as a council member...
Well, I'm, I'm throwing these solutions out there, but I'm telling you, they're falling on deaf ears. You're saying it now, but I've never heard you say what you just said.
I, I, I received an email from you that you said...
How many years have I been talking about a transit landfill closure fee? Counselor Thomas, have you heard me talk about it for a long time?
So then, but look, just like around this table, you all make motions all the time. Why haven't you made a motion?
We, we'll do that if you want to do that, and then the mayor can add it in his budget.
Counselor Thomas?
Well, I'd like to... Anyway, Ms. City Manager, I think that we can find the funds needed. We just don't have to keep impacting, putting the impact on the 58,000 people out there. I've said this over and over and over. The district I represent is challenging because not everybody's going to be able to, the one-cart system is not going to work. I got people with large acreage, lots of trees, big yards, lots of leaf, lots of straw. I've got people all over the board that's different from the characteristics in a lot of other areas.
Household waste is what we're talking about on the one-cart. Household. It will work. Household waste.
We're going to continue on the yard waste? Are we going to continue doing what we're doing?
We, we're not talking about yard waste.
No, but are we? Or are you going to one-cart there too? Are you asking me to approve that?
I have not, no one is talking to me about a one-cart for yard waste. It's all only about household waste. Uncontainer of trash that's sitting there in a bucket or in a bag or wherever along the...
So we're going to continue to pick up the, the carts and the bags that people put out for yard waste?
As far as I know.
All right, that's good information.
Yeah. So what we're talking about here, if it wasn't clear, has to do with household waste. And, and, and because one truck is following another, it's forcing them to work off days when they typically work four days, 10 hours a day. I, I, you know, I, I think management, you heard John Pittman talk about his history, his background. He's worked in these industries. Drill Short has been here 40 years. We got to listen to them. They're, they're the professionals. They go to the APW, whatever, uh, they know best practices, but we're not listening to them.
Well, and I would, I, I tend to agree with one of the things the counselor said, and that is, I'm not sure unlimited yard waste is sustainable. I think at some point, you got to go to some type of maximum number of bags or something. Because as Counselor Davis pointed out, there are different areas of our community that have different sized lots. And it's really not fair for, going back to Counselor Tucker, the senior who is on a postage stamp sized lot to be paying the same thing as somebody that's cutting an acre and a half. That's just, that just doesn't make sense to me. Counselor Thomas, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, we have now had two votes on this issue that did not, um, were not sufficient to pass. And we have had people sitting in this audience on the public agenda for four hours. And I would like for us to move to the public agenda.
No, we were going, we, we listened to the conversation around here talking about an item that this council was interested in talking about. And I, I appreciate the recommendation. We are trying to move as quickly as we can to these individuals. There is nobody else. You were the last person, by the way, so... Does anybody else have any comments before we move on? All right, we will move to the public agenda.